Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 26, 2023. It's 1:00 P. M. This is a City of Prescott City Council's study session. A roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. We have two items for discussion at this session today. The first one is a presentation and discussion regarding automatic meter-reading infrastructure and water meter replacement project.
Thank you. Yes, real quick, I would like to invite Janet Ramsey up to introduce the project and to introduce the partners who we're working with.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Janet Ramsey, Public Works Department. Today, we do have two presentations for you, so it's the All Public Works Show. We're going to start off with the automated automated. I knew I was going to blow this one. Automated Meter Reading Infrastructure Installation Program. This is just part of our routine meter replacement program that suddenly became very technical, and I think this is going to answer a lot of the things that we've been wanting. It's a real enhancement in customer service and our efficiencies and technical aspects. And so you all know, you all know Steve Olfer's here with the manager with utilities, and I will let him introduce the rest of his team here. And we will just get started. I want you to be aware that this is an advancement of our strategic initiatives that advance your strategic goals as well. So these are all good things today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am very pleased to be able to present this to you. I'll introduce my team here at the table, and then we'll continue on with the program. Of course, I'm Steve Olfer, the Utilities Manager with Public Works. Next to me is Nathan Graham. He's our Water Production Superintendent. And Jordan Miller joins us from Ferguson Waterworks, which is the company that we're proposing to operate this or run this program for us. And I'm sorry, I don't.
My name is Alan Breece. I'm a Solutions Architect with Badger Meter.
Thank you. Okay, the feedback is really big. Okay. Well, we, this, this program is, as Janet mentioned, a strategic initiative of ours. We need to change out meters on a routine basis to make sure that they're staying consistent and providing good information for us. The current system that we have requires that we have employees drive by in a truck to pick up all the different meter reads. And when that fails, then we have to send them back out to actually go look at the meter. So our attempt here is to upgrade the meters so that we get our most accurate information we can and to upgrade to what is known as an automatic meter-reading infrastructure, which would use the cellphone system to transmit the readings from those meters to a central location that would allow us to see almost real-time meter reads. And not only the city staff, but also customers could also sign up for an application on their cellphone where they could bring all this information in and see it as they travel or however they, they choose to do it. So I need to see if I have a clicker here. There it is. So we'll go ahead and get started. So we're going to go ahead and start talking a little bit about our background of this program, and we'll spend some time on the program overview and the budget that we have for this program. And then I'll turn the show over to, to Jordan, and he'll talk about the positives of this program and how it's going to help us. So your water system here is relatively old in certain portions, not so much in others, but nonetheless, we have about 27,000 water service connections. That means there's about 27,000 water meters out there, both residential and commercial. And all of those meters are being used regularly, and therefore, they're starting to break down. Most of them are between 10 and 15 years old, and as I think Jordan and can talk about is that everything starts to break down over time. And in this case, we're seeing a lot of breakdowns and failures, and we feel that it's time to start addressing this and trying to get ahead of it a little bit so we don't have a huge loss of meters. So our new, this gives us an opportunity to try out some new stuff, get some new technology. So we go from where we're actually manually reading them with a truck to where all this information comes to us. And not only is that help us in determining how things are going in the system, but also it helps the customers to understand that there are ways to conserve water by using this technology. And they'll have it right there in the palm of their hand to see how much water they've used yesterday or earlier today. Every, every four to six hours, it will transmit information to us into a central database, and then we can begin observing and taking a look at those. We can set up alerts so that if we see a meter that's running constantly, we can go out there and put some attention to it. So there, this has a lot of different advancements in it. It's very similar to the Prescott Valley system that we've talked a little bit about in some of our committee meetings. So this is our, this is our plan. So we plan to start this in this fiscal year, and of course, everybody remembers, we, we earned a grant from WIFA for $3 million for the first phase of this program. So we have a, a little bit of seed money to start this out. So here's what, here's our plan. And of course, this will be in phases as we work our way through, but we're replacing all of the water meters with Badger brand meters. Now, if you, if you haven't been out in the, and looking at meters, you'd know that we have about 10 or so different styles and types and brands of meters out there, which all have different specs, different wear-out periods, all different, different things. So by going to a single brand, anybody who we have in our system or in our employee group can know exactly what they're getting when they open up that, that water meter box. And we can store parts, we can have replacements readily available for us to make any changes that we need to. Along with this, we'd like to add the Orion Cellular Points. Now, this takes the, all the information and four times a day sends it to our central database through the cellular system. This is opposed to us owning our own infrastructure and using radios, et cetera. So we do have, obviously, with our geographic area and our hilly and lots of ups and downs, we do have some challenges in that, but Jordan is going to show us how we're going to accomplish meeting all those needs. Additionally, Ferguson offers a customer interface, and what that will do, as I said, will add a application to your phone so you can see what your water usage is and give you all kinds of different tools to, to be sure that you're meeting your goals in conservation. Additionally, we'll be integrating with Immunis billing system so you can see your billing information right on your cellphone. I'm not quite sure exactly if we can pay your bill, but there's a lot of different things that you can see, so, so you can set a monthly budget for your water. And what this comes to is that not only will we have all these conveniences, but we'll also have an opportunity to save more water. And I'm very aware of the conservation ideas that we have within the city that folks want to save water, and this will give us that opportunity. In our WIFA grant, we calculated that we could save up to 405 acre feet per year. So it's a pretty big, pretty big in the start, and hopefully, we'll be able to meet that goal. So these little guys are kind of like what we're talking about. There's a meter and an endpoint that will work together to provide this service.
Mayor Protam, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, Stephen, to stop you there for a second. I just had a question. How did you guys determine that estimate of 405 acre feet per year as a, as a potential savings?
Generally, over time, meters lose their ability to read over, they, they begin to to lower or decrease. On average, meters that are this old tend to be 10 to 20% off. And so essentially, we're not seeing when somebody flushes a toilet or takes a shower. So these small uses over time will allow us to make up that difference.
So I guess my, my other question related to that is, you said that's a goal you hope to achieve. How will you know that you've achieved that goal?
As part of the WIFA goal or WIFA program, we're doing what the American Water Works Association Water Audit Program. And so actually, Nate is working on that with his team, and will be able to supply us with a baseline level of how much water we use and water loss. And once we complete this program, we'll have that baseline to compare to.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Public Works has budgeted $12.5 million for this program over five years. The first year is a, funding was budgeted for $1.5 million, and the subsequent years, FY '25 through '29, was $2.75 million per year. But of course, that was before we knew we had this $3 million grant, which will give us the opportunity to use that instead of our CIP. So with that, if there are no further questions, I'll pass it on to Jordan and let him do his presentation.
I've got a couple, Steve.
Yes, sir.
So this Badger brand of meters, how long has this brand been in existence? Who else is using them? What's the life expectancy of these new meters?
All good questions, Councilman. Badger Meter was founded in 1905, so we are currently 118 years old. We only manufacture water meters and water meter technology. So we've been in the business a long time and have a tremendous experience with this. The product that you're looking at today, we have sold between three and four million of these cellular radios over the past nine years. That's far in excess of all of our competitors. As far as how long a water meter lasts, that depends greatly on the water quality and the chemistry of your water. But, you know, I mean, I can always give you a, you know, a finger to the wind, so to speak, and that would probably be, again, 10 to 20 years, depending on the meter technology that you choose. And if you can clarify which one you chose.
The Record All.
Record, the Badger Record All, very good. It's been an industry-leading technology since the 1970s. That meter's been on the market for almost 50 years. So, but again, when it comes to a mechanically-driven meter, the life expectancy depends on your water quality and what's in the water.
What other municipalities have selected your meter to be used in a similar model?
We actually have many Arizona water utilities, and, and I may have to refer to one of my colleagues over here. Can you speak?
Yeah, here, here in the state of Arizona, using the same technology, you've got Clarkdale, Town of Morana, Big Park Water out of Sedona, Walden Meadows, which is just south there, Will Hoyt is implementing a pilot currently, Tucson, there's many, and those are all on the proposal that we gave you. We'd be happy to give you a, a list of references as well.
So is Ferguson the distributor?
Ferguson is the distributor. We are partnered with Badger.
And then you'll be the primary contact for any maintenance or otherwise?
Correct.
So obviously, remote monitoring of meter numbers is not something that was available back in 1905?
Not, not a chance.
So having these available to be monitored individually by homeowners has got to be a relatively new technology, correct?
The product, as that's being proposed today, was introduced in 2014 along with the consumer portal, the smartphone app.
I know we have, as Steve mentioned, a lot of hills and valleys and dels and everything else in this city, and there is many areas that have very limited cellphone coverage because of line-of-sight requirements. Are those kinds of issues going to be impacted by this new metering system?
If you don't mind, Mayor, we've got a couple slides going over the cellular coverage and our plan for the areas that are in those rough topography. I can cover that now, or we can go through the slides here, and I can address it.
We'll go ahead and proceed with that, and it'll probably answer my question.
Okay. And if I may make a statement as well, we've been running a pilot project focusing on those areas to ensure that we can get data out of those supposed cellular black holes. So, but Jordan's presentation will address that.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, a quick clarification question for me. It looks like the total amount that you're looking at over the next five years is 12 and 1/2 million. You mentioned that WIFA grant of 3 million. Does that come out of the 12 and 1/2 million so that the city's cost is 19, excuse me, 9 and 1/2 million? Added 10 million in there. Mark, Mark just, his stomach clenched. Sorry about that, man. At any rate, are we looking at 9 and 1/2 million, or is that, it says in addition, a $3 million grant. Is that in addition to the 12 and 1/2 million?
Correct. We will, that $3 million grant will be our seed money and will reduce the total, the total amount.
Right. So does that reduce it to 12 and 1/2 million or reduce it from 12 and 1/2?
No, it will reduce it to 9.5 million.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I also had a question. I know that we are a water provider for outside of city limits in some areas too, and I was wondering if this project will also be implemented, like in Chino Valley and Mountain Club and other areas where we are the water provider or just within the city boundaries?
At this time, we intend to do everything that we can legally do. So Chino Valley certainly will be one of our first parts because of how far it is for us to roll in and roll out. So we'll be looking to, to Joe Young and his staff to help us through some of the other things that we might run into, especially ones that are communities that are master-metered, et cetera. So we'll have to work out some of those issues, but that's not a very large portion of our meters.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that in my research, I was very happy to see that Badger was an American company manufactured in America, and also, they're known for being able to withstand extreme temperature swings without freezing up. That's what set them apart from their competitors. Thank you.
Thank you. We did do extensive research. Nate here has been working on this for about six years, and so we've done a lot of research to figure out what will work for our system.
Councilman Tenny, you had another question?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. You mentioned you're going to be looking at, at replacing 27,000 water meters. I don't know how long it takes to replace one of those, but I did some quick math. If you do one a day, that'll take you 74 years. So I'm assuming that you're planning on doing more than one a day. What, what does that look like?
We plan, our, our goal is to, to move 600 per month.
I'm sorry. I had funny people here making comments to me. I'm, I'm very distractible. Would you, would you tell me one more time?
Yes, sir. Our goal is to replace 600 per month over five years.
All right. That is, that is ambitious.
Yes.
You've got the, the manpower, woman power, and whatnot to make that work?
Well, one of the things that we will bring to later on in the year is a contract to have a company do that for us, because we do not have the person power to, to accomplish that.
Okay. And that's, is that in addition, then, to the 9 and 1/2 million that the city's looking at this, or is that?
No, sir.
Folded into that amount?
It's more of a rounding number, to be honest with you.
Sure, sure.
It's about, well, we're looking somewhere in a neighborhood of $300,000 a year.
Okay, okay. Fair enough. Very good. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've all been contacted by a few people in the community about some concerns with the meters. Have, have you all had, been contacted by a few about regulating the allotment of water? And I don't think these meters have the ability to do that, and I don't, we wouldn't do it anyway, but we've had a few people that had some gardens that, that reached out to me through, you know, the city website, concerned about them being metered and then have their water shut off because they've exceeded some limit. But that's not possible, is it?
Not under this program, no, ma'am. We, we don't shut off water meters unless they don't pay their bill.
Yeah. I just wanted to make that, put that out to the, the broader audience out there watching, because we, as I said, we've had some concerns about the metering. Thank you.
And as these things age, like us all, unfortunately, we just start to break down, and that's what we're trying to get ahead of here.
Badger does offer a solution for a shut-off valve in a meter, but like Steve said, with the program that we're implementing, these are standard Record All, standard water meters, and they have no valves or capabilities of being shut off remotely.
You know, I missed that first part. You're saying that this meter has the ability to add? It does not?
It does not. It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to go. Thank you, Mayor, and Council Chambers. Again, I'm Jordan Miller. I'm with our Ferguson Meter and Automation Group. Ferguson has partnered with many, many manufacturers across the nation, and we have dedicated a sole team to the meter and automation side of the business, because as we know, this is a 20-year product. This is not something that we want to come into the City of Prescott, sell and leave. This is something that we are wanting to be valued as a partner for 20 years. As you can see, I have my entire team over here. This is just a fraction of what we have behind this. We have project managers, integration specialists, the entire Badger support team, myself, and then we also have a local branch here in Prescott Valley, as well as four others located across the state that we can use for stocking product for the project over the next five years to help combat against supply chain issues that we know we're facing today, which has taken a toll on a lot of businesses. So by us being a part of this project, we hope to be able to supply or, or stock a fair amount of product to keep this project rolling at all times and not hit any supply chain issues. So a little bit of my agenda on the Badger solution that we're bringing today. I'm going to go over a little solution overview. Steve mentioned there's a very friendly consumer portal that Badger offers with this cellular solution called Eye on Water. The third topic we're going to discuss is water conservation. As a native to Arizona, I know this is a very touchy subject, and this solution that we are working with City of Prescott is going to have some data and some tools that is going to help your water utility operations, as well as your customers help with that effort to conserve water, catch leaks, and take actionable intelligence towards this data versus, you know, a reactive approach. And then, of course, beyond the reading, this system has many bolt-on features that can be added on that I'll discuss as we go through the slide. So solution overview. Orion Cellular Network as a Service AMI solution. How does this work compared to traditional AMI fixed-based systems? Badger's network as a service solution uses existing cellular infrastructure to bring meter-reading data to the City of Prescott using frequencies that are strictly set aside for cellular communication. So from the Orion Cellular Endpoint to the existing cellular networks through a private network, which then, which then brings this data that can be viewable on the Beacon Cloud based platform. That is where your data is going to end up. This allows Prescott to view this data and take, view this data and address demands to take actionable intelligence to help your customer service, as well as the entire water operations team here in Prescott. So traditional fixed-based systems require a lot of back engine, back-end engineering, development, deployment. We have been working with Steve and his team to roll out a simple solution, which is the Badger, you know, cellular system. And what that entails is a cellular coverage analysis. There is no contractors, maintenance, poles, towers, assets that you guys have to lease, contractors involved as you guys put up the network that is going to read these meter systems. So we have already done a cellular coverage analysis with Badger and determined that Prescott has the proper coverage to run this system. With that, the only fees involved is your network as a service management fee. This includes technical support, customer license to the Beacon software platform, hosted customer data, the Eye on Water Consumer Portal, and then software updates, as well as an entire technical support team. So all your maintenance fees are rolled into this one network as a service. So let's get into the million-dollar question, the cellular coverage analysis. So Badger, when they ran your cellular coverage, they found out that 99.6%, 28,373 meters are going to communicate through the cellular system with the topography of it the way it is today. Only 0.4%, 108 locations came back potentially insufficient. That does not mean that they are not going to work. So what I'd like to do is show you here those potentially insufficient areas on the map here of Prescott. So when they went out with a, a special tool through these areas, some of you might be looking at some of these dots going, yeah, there's no way they're going to get coverage. So as Steve mentioned, over the last month or so, we've been running a pilot. Those little red dots that you see on there are where we have cellular endpoints deployed today. Right now, we're at 100% communication coverage. So as you can see, that overlays some of those locations. So over the next 12 months, Badger will run another cellular coverage analysis, because as cellular coverage expands, these locations might pick up over the next 12 months. We've also seen in the past, and Alan can speak to this, where you've seen potentially insufficient coverage. We'll go out there and we will put an endpoint there, and it will actually communicate. In the event that these do not communicate, let's say a handful, we'll call it 40 to 50, Ferguson is going to provide City of Prescott with a drive-by equipment that can read these radios via drive-by, which is currently how you read your meters today. So in the end, we should expect 100% coverage, whether it's the drive-by on these potentially insufficient with the 99.6% that we have covered through the cellular system. Couple of the, the main problems that utilities face today, I'm not going to go through this whole list, but the top two that stick out to us that have been doing this for a while is the lack of maintenance and labor force, which is what Steve mentioned. So reliable Orion Cellular endpoints and no infrastructure maintenance is going to relieve Steve and his team from that labor burden that they would face today. These are very, very reliable endpoints covered with a 20-year warranty. Some of the, the challenges that I see are too many calls. So from your customer service representative's side, they are burdened with calls day in and day out with water consumption issues. Prescott being able to view this data on your Beacon software platform, as well as the customer being able to utilize the Eye on Water Consumer Portal will allow them to address data issues, water usage issues with actionable intelligence. They're not just speaking to, I would call it, a guest. They are going to have real data in front of them at their fingertips. The Eye on Water Consumer Engagement. As part of an ongoing effort to increase customer service, Badger has provided access to households to securely view the data for their water usage. So if I was a customer service representative in Prescott, and I'm on the phone with somebody from the City of Prescott, I can view, if you look there, you see that little water drop inside that green circle. I can see that they are a registered Eye on Water Consumer Portal registered customer. This allows them to go onto their consumer portal, and the City of Prescott Customer Service Representative can click that little dot there, that little water droplet, and they're going to see this data right here, which is what you would see as an Eye on Water customer. They can speak to current leaks, data, they can set parameters as the consumer so that you can have text messages or emails sent to them on daily leak alerts. And they can go on and look at the tools that are given here to see daily, weekly, monthly, and even yearly water usage, also compared to precipitation in previous year's usage. So this allows Prescott, as well as the consumer, to sit here and look at the same data and work through their, their questions or concerns. Another cool feature that we have here is public outreach on the Eye on Water. So if, let's call it a water main break, or they're doing services on a water line, Prescott can create a banner that will be pumped out onto the Eye on Water Consumer Portal. As you see in the top there, you see the sample alert. So whatever banner they create, they can put this out globally or to a subset of customers to let them know that they're going to be working on something in the neighborhood for, you know, a certain amount of period of time, and this can be viewed via the app, Android, iOS, or on a laptop. Water con- Water conservation. Very important to me. I know it's very important to Prescott. One cool feature that Beacon offers you is a reduction goal. It's kind of hard to see, but on the left tabs there, there is going to be a conservation tab. So Prescott could actually put out incentives to their customers to help with the water conservation goal. And then you can see if you failed to meet those reduction goals, and exactly what areas are contributing to that. So this allows you to, as a city, help with conservation efforts from the consumer side and from the city side. Another Beacon feature that is, to me, the most important, which is, again, that proactive approach versus the reactive, is you will now get pinpointed data that shows exactly where leaks are occurring. It'll show you how many leaks occur out of so many meters, and it'll allow you to address this with the customer. So I actually had a funny call from Matt O'Brien, which is one of the City of Prescott employees we're working with on this pilot. And he had let me know that there was a leak at a house, but he sent an employee out there, and he looked at the meter pit, and there was no water. And I said, "Well, Matt, that's a good thing. So you went out there, noticed that there's visibly no leak at this location. Now, the City of Prescott can have that healthy conversation with the customer and let them know that, hey, we checked our city side, there's no leak. This means you could have a broken irrigation line, you could have a water leak under your house. It allows you good faith to go to your customers and let them know that there's a leak on their side, and that your water meter has caught that." And they will be able to view that on their Eye on Water consumer portal as well.
Jordan, I have a comment.
Yes.
I live out in Southview, and I think that's probably one of your insufficient areas out there, because we frequently get phone service dropped right in the middle of a call. And I've, a couple of customers have brought to my attention claims that their current meters are inaccurate, and somehow they're being overcharged for the amount of water they use. I have that difficult to believe sometimes, but there are some times when you get legitimate breaks. And I have a perfect example of it. When I got my bill, and all of a sudden I saw a spiking of use, and I didn't have any visual water in my area. But as I started investigating this, I noticed moisture near where my drip irrigation system connected with my meter. So after digging down a foot or two, we started to see more and more water there. And fortunately, I was able to get a plumber out to have that repaired. But that took a month afterwards before I saw that bill and started to say, "Hey, something's going on." I also know a couple of customers who are not, they don't live here all the time. They have a second home up here, and sometimes during the winter, when you get freeze and thaw cycles, you'll get a broken water line. And they lose a ton of water over the course of a month until they get their bill, and it's $10,000. And, of course, we've had the policy here that once every five years, you can apply for a 50% credit. But that doesn't, I mean, it takes something that's really painful down to just pretty darn painful. So being able to have this type of monitoring available on your cell phone could be extremely valuable for individuals. However, you do have a network here of data. I know you've got a VPN setup for it, but do you have some ability to assure that this system can't be hacked, and that inaccurate readings somehow can be created? Are there any occasional audits or accuracy verifications you can do to make sure the system is working accurately, and then we can be able to have that assurance when we get challenged by individual water users?
Mr. Mayor, a number of good questions and good observations. Number one, all water meters are required to have a guaranteed accuracy per the American Waterworks Association. So the accuracy of the meter itself can always be tested to verify that the meter is recording accurately, and that you're accurately charging your customers for the volume of water that they consume. And that can be done either through your own organization, through a third party, or through us, the manufacturer. As far as the security of the software, the Beacon system being proposed is securely hosted by the world's largest web hosting company. Our product is certified and tested annually against SOC 2 compliance, and also ISO 2000, and, let me stop and think, 12007 compliance as well. And we also adhere to the higher European security requirements as well. Because the system is not based on a Microsoft system, we're almost impervious to attacks by malicious software and viruses and things. But that is performed on a daily basis. So they're constantly looking for hacking attempts and things of that nature. Please understand that the system does not transmit nor collect any privately identifiable data. So the data that is being sent from the water meter to the backend system is simply a series of encrypted numbers, okay, that represent the water meter readings themselves, plus any alarms and things. So there's no private data that can be collected through the air, plus, of course, it's being sent across a virtual private network from the point of collection all the way to the hosted software as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I just want a little clarification. Is this program going to be just for residential accounts, or is it going to include commercial accounts?
Commercial, yeah. I believe that we will be using it for commercial accounts as well.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Does this transmission of data require a source of electricity? And is it subject to, like, if there was a power outage or something, would the system not work or fail?
You go ahead. Okay. No, sir. The product is powered by a long-term, 20-year battery life that's encapsulated into the product itself.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I get my utility bills now, one of the things I like best is that I get a comparison of how much water I used in June this year versus June last year. That's awesome for me. Kind of has a little competition with myself to see if I can use less each year, which I love. So I know that our city keeps that data for at least a year, and it sounds like there's going to be something new with this. Are we starting from scratch there? I'm not going to be able to check this year's versus last year's when that gets in there? Or is there an opportunity to upload some of the data that the city already has on my meter from this past year, this year, to the Badger system, so I can compare without a break?
Yes, Mr. Councilman. The graphs and things that you're seeing on your water bill actually come from your Munis billings, utility billing system. So you will always have that, number one. Number two, the Beacon system provides you with what, I forget, the diurnal demand. So you can actually look at this week compared to last week. You can see today versus yesterday, this month versus last month, this year versus last year. So you get to choose that.
Oh, you're speaking my language. This is fantastic. Great, great. Last thing is, it's fortuitous that you're named Badger, and you're putting 28,000 of these in. Our high school mascot is a Badger, so we are willing to discuss naming rights with you at any time. You just reach out to me.
We would be open for that. It was actually a good question that was asked about commercial meters for water conservation. This is one of the graphs that would get displayed, which is district metering. So what you would see here on the graph is a supply meter with the demand meter. So as you can see, let's just call it for round numbers. If a supply meter off a well was pumping a million gallons into a subdivision, and those demand meters only accounted for 800,000 gallons of consumption, you could see from the graph, the graph from the Beacon portal, that there was a 200,000 variance in the consumption. So you guys would know that there's a leak between that supply well and those demand meters. So it allows you to pinpoint an area. So commercial meters would be very advantageous to put on the system. Beyond the reading, we know Ferguson, as well as Badger, this is a very big investment for any utility. The good thing with the Badger solution that you guys are looking at today, you're getting more than just a meter read. You can get things such as water quality, leak detection, pressure monitoring. That way, you can go out and investigate response procedures, and the utility can pinpoint areas within the utility that are having water infrastructure issues. All of these things can be brought back into the same Beacon software that you guys are using for the meter-reading data today. What are the outcomes of this solution? Trusted local partner, Ferguson, 20-year product, the Eye on Water consumer portal, network as a services we discussed, which is all incumbent of multiple things, dedicated technical support from both Ferguson and Badger, a strategically phased deployment. I mention this because with traditional fixed-based systems, as you grow, let's say you grow between here and Chino, which I imagine you would, you wouldn't have to go in and put in additional infrastructure. This allows you to scale at your own pace with the same coverage, the same devices, without having to put up any additional infrastructure. Certified product trainers are going to come in and train the staff from top to bottom, so that you guys are experts, just as we are today in this room. And then, of course, software as a service, which is on your Beacon cloud-based platform. And then I like to close it out with a little quote from our chief executive. "We want to ensure that through a consultative approach with our associates, we are guiding a customer's project to make certain it is more successful because they did business with Ferguson." You guys are hopefully going to be a valued partners of ours, and we thank you for this opportunity to be able to sit in this chair today and potentially work with the city of Prescott. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, we do have an agenda item on the voting meeting to approve this contract with Ferguson. We went through a competitive process to choose Ferguson, and so the reason we did this presentation today was to give you the opportunity to ask any questions, and then the agenda item will be on today's voting meeting to proceed with this project.
Well, thank you, Steve. I, for one, am pretty excited about this implementation of this metering system. I know it's going to solve a lot of problems with folks that have second homes up here or don't monitor their water usage until they get that huge bill, and then try to figure out how to fix it and try to negotiate a settlement or something. This way, we can say you have access to it on almost a daily basis. So it's up to you to monitor your use, and if you have a problem, you'll know about it very quickly and give you the opportunity to solve that problem. So I think the community at large is going to benefit substantially from this, and I expect you and Janet to be here for 20 years while we implement it and monitor it.
No promises, sir.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for joining our panel today.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Oh, I just wanted to sum up with, it's always a pleasure to reinvest our tax dollars into our infrastructure to better serve our community's needs. Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our presentation on the automatic meter-reading infrastructure. And then we'll move on to Item B, which is a presentation and discussion regarding transfer station operations and proposed hour changes.
The next item on our study session today is for a discussion regarding the city's transfer station and some potential proposed changes to our operating hours. And I have Janet Ramsey here to do that presentation.
Yeah, first of all, solid waste, I think, is one of the most front-facing services that we have in the city, right? It's hard to miss those big garbage trucks rolling around. But I do have a question. How many of you have been to the transfer station? Good, very good. I really expected that there would be a few who haven't, because most people probably haven't. That said, it is a really busy place. We serve about 400 customers a day, taking in about 250 tons, right, Gina? Gina's our data person here, but we're taking in about 250 tons on a daily basis. And so it's important that we operate this transfer station efficiently. We're seeing a lot of people, we're moving a lot of people through. And of course, like everything else, it's getting busier, we're getting more crowded, and it's difficult to get in and around. So Brady's here to talk to you a little bit about some of the proposed changes, some of the things that are coming up in the future, and also right away in December, but also longer term, some of the things that we have going on as well. And again, I want to mention to you that these are all strategic initiatives on behalf of the Public Works Department that advance your strategic goals. At the end of the presentation, well, actually, just like Steve's, on the consent agenda later on, we have this item on, or part of this item on the consent agenda, so we'd like to offer up answers on any questions that you might have going forward. So Brady, go ahead, proceed, and introduce your team, please.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Brady Higgs, Solid Waste Superintendent. And I'll just kind of go through, before I get started, of who I got here with me today.
Lee Peterson, Solid Waste Supervisor.
Gina Arieka, Solid Waste Administrative Coordinator.
Yeah, so this is most of our team. We got one of our supervisors, who's out on military leave, Mark Johnson. But this is kind of our face of our team. And so today, like Janet said, we're here to kind of give you a brief overview of the transfer station, what we do there, daily business, and then some of the reason why we're bringing this item to you as far as work-life balance, burnout, retention, operational needs. So first thing, we'll start out with an overview. So the transfer sta, it's a transfer station and not a landfill. That basically means that we accept materials, they're stored temporarily on-site, and then ultimately hauled to their final destination. So as far as our garbage that we take in, the 250 tons that Janet was talking about, all of that gets hauled out to the Gray Wolf landfill out in Dewey. We accept co-mingle recycling from city collection, as well as our recycle center that community members come down Sundog Ranch Road and dump off co-mingle recycle, big boxes, from moving in at some dumpsters. Our recyclables are hauled down to Phoenix through an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix at their North Great Way transfer station. And, next one. So trash. So this is, this picture kind of depicts our tipping floor. It's roughly 150 feet long by 40 feet wide, and this is where customers come check in at the fee booth. We capture their inbound weight. They would pull around here, offload their material, to then get it shoved into, or loaded into, the transfer trailer. We take private haulers, you know, general public, DIY projects, all that sort of stuff. Our co-mingle recycling, so inside of our transfer station building, we have two dedicated bays that this material is stored through the same means. So our collection vehicles come and drop off in these two bays, as well as all the material from the recycle center. This material sits typically one day, and then it gets loaded into the transfer trailers at the beginning of the following day. The floor is nice and clean, no contamination, and then that gets loaded and then hauled the following day down to Phoenix. So our current operation, we operate six days a week, Monday through Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A minimum staffing level requirements require us having one senior equipment operator, two equipment operators, one fee booth attendant, and then we have a supervisor on-call on Saturdays. And so these employees that we're talking about are just running the operation. So that's the loading operation, checking people in and out, when a NRT comes in, going, following, taking them up to a different part of the yard, general yard maintenance, picking up loose litter that's blown up against the fence line, those sorts of items. As you see on that bottom, one of the bottom bullet points on the minimum staffing levels, on the last report that we ran, and which ties in with the operating hours, is between our senior equipment operators and our equipment operators, roughly 30% to 40% of their year is on overtime. And a lot of that is due to the hours and how it's been structured for a long, long time. So we open the gates at 8:00 a.m., we close them at 4:00. If we took in 250 tons, we had to load all that stuff, all that material. The biggest thing we run into is we have a huge rush, sometimes in the afternoon, from noon to 4:00, and we have a couple hundred tons or 100 tons sitting on the ground at 4:00 when the gates close. And it takes roughly 15 to 25 minutes to load a transfer trailer. We have all this material in the last couple hours of the shift, and we're not permitted to store municipal solid waste on our site. It has to be contained. So all that material has to get loaded into those transfer trailers. So all that material has to get loaded into those transfer trailers each day. So their typical shift is 6:00 a.m. to 4:30, and most of their nights, they're not finishing their duties until anywhere between 5:00 and 6:30 at night, depending on how much material we took in that day. The lines of customers waiting to drop off can be very long. I know on the next slide, I'll show you guys our queuing line typically in the morning at 8:00 a.m. But like Janet spoke about earlier, roughly 400 customers come through our gates every single day, and they drop off an estimated 250 tons a day. So here's a couple pictures. I know they're a little bit smaller, but this is about 7:45 in the morning. We roughly have anywhere from 20 to 30 vehicles just queuing, waiting for us to open the gates. You know, they missed us from the day before, so they're getting there early, beating the rush. And there's days that we have at the transfer station, and it's random. Some days are lighter than others, but sometimes that line can be constantly out at that location the entire day. One thing I do want to note on our current operation, so all this material that we're talking, that these customers are hauling in and we're bringing in, is hauled out by a contractor. We did get notification that they will not be renewing the contract this year. It was initiated in 2016, and I think we were all living in a different world in 2016 as far as equipment costs, employee salaries, stuff like that. So they did notice, they did notify us that they will not be renewing. So in probably the coming months, I'm guessing sometime right after the first of the year, we'll be coming back with you guys with, hopefully, an award of a contract for a new One thing that we're tying back in with all this hour, this proposed hours change, I talked a little bit about it with employee retention, work-life balance. It's tough, when I talked to Janet about this, is having your employees start their day knowing that they're going to be there until 6:00 at night, just the day after. So we're just trying to balance that. We're trying to keep the employees that we've trained that are doing a great job for us. An earlier end to the day will benefit not only our contractor, our employees, but we're still remaining open for our customers, the same eight hours each day. I know that some of our concerns that we were worried about is, is this too early? Is this not going to meet some of our customers' needs? But I think that we already have a lot of people that come in Monday through Friday. I think us continuing to have a Saturday option for customers that work Monday through Friday still has an eight-hour window to come into the transfer station, that it's not going to have that large of an effect. We did take an informal survey at the transfer station for roughly 500 customers, just to kind of get a set of where we were, how we were doing, if this would affect them. And most of the survey came back that it would not negatively impact their operation, their business, or them doing business with us. And then also in the survey, we had a 90% rating that their service at the transfer station was excellent, which is always good to hear, if we can get some of those numbers out.
Councilman Ken, tell me you had a question.
Mayor, thank you. I know you get a lot of construction debris, but I noticed in your, I think it was your page one here, you referred to e-waste. How do you deal with the e-waste, especially now with these new lithium batteries? Is that what it is, e-waste? It's the computers and all the other things?
Yeah, so the e-waste, you are correct. We will take laptops, computer monitors, flat-screen TVs. The batteries, we are not accepting when they bring in. The only time that we will collect those is for hazardous household waste event. When they do come into the transfer station, we don't accept those. If they do happen, if the resident or customer happens to leave it in, it's not anywhere on the tipping floor, it's in a metal container set off to the side if something were to spark or go on that. But we take that out to, we have a contract for used metal and e-waste that's local, and we haul that out. Typically, it's about once a month, we take a full 40-yard roll-off full of miscellaneous e-waste.
That was, I was very curious about how they were dealing with that. We've seen in the news, all of us, a lot of fires at these transfer stations, and I was, they've never really given us a reason these fires are starting. But I was curious about the lithium batteries, because I suspected some of it might be that. But thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Yeah, I think this is going to be probably a recognized improvement. I know there's a lot of businesses like to get this stuff done early in the morning and be able to do the rest of their business during the day. So I think that's beneficial for both your staff and for the customers at large. Councilman Tenny.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I agree. It sounds like a good move for you folks, and for me, it's really about that. If there's one hour less in the afternoon, one hour more in the morning, I think we, as consumers and customers and whatnot, can certainly adjust to that. But if it helps you folks out, that's awesome. Janet mentioned that you're kind of the front-facing part of the city in many ways. I have found that to be absolutely true. We have people who don't even realize that the Prescott Police Department or Fire Department are part of the city, but everybody knows who picks up their trash. And it's magic, man. I'll tell you what, I get up virtually every Tuesday morning to watch it dump into the thing. It's just super cool that I can create this stuff. I try to keep it to a minimum, but create this stuff, and then somebody magically takes it away from me every week. I appreciate so much what you do for us. It's awesome. And like I say, everybody in Prescott knows that the city of Prescott picks up their trash and takes it away from them. And I also really appreciate some customer service pieces I've seen over the years. Occasionally, you know, have, you know, come knock something over or whatever. Without fail, I've always seen your guys, or sometimes your ladies, get out, and, you know, they don't scrape everything up, but they do a pretty good job of cleaning up and just making it nice. It's really our responsibility as the customer to do that, but they go out of their way to make sure everything goes super, super well for us. So thank you so much for what you do. It's maybe taken for granted, as was mentioned, but not by me.
I do want to just touch on a couple other things just before we get wrapped up. The note that we do plan on hopefully implementing this on December 4th, that would provide a 60-day notice, and we would be doing that with a message board, a large message board right where you check in. We'd be doing it through posts on social media and through the website. As, I did want to touch base, Janet mentioned, we do have a couple other projects that are going to be going on at this facility, some other software, some stuff that we have on the consent agenda today. We are going to have an upcoming project in the spring of next year that is going to relocate the transfer station fee booth and the scales. If you guys, you guys have said, you guys have all visited the transfer station. At the end of Sundog Ranch Road, we have a hard 90-degree turn into getting lined up on our scales. Sometimes we have a lot of folks that have never hauled the trailer, and they borrowed it from their neighbor and getting it in there, and it makes it tough for a lot of our customers to get on that scale properly, as well as it, we're limited on space on when customers offload their items and they have to go pay. Sometimes they're backed up, and it causes a lot of congestion. So we are planning on relocating the fee booth more out into Sundog Ranch Road, where it's a straight shot in and off the scale to help our customers. Another item, which will be on the consent agenda today, is going to be a fee booth software upgrade that's going to be able to provide a handful of different opportunities. And I'm going to let Gina just speak to just a couple items that it's going to enhance from our customers' perspective.
So currently, our software has been implemented since 2013, and I think most of us and all of our regular devices and our regular computer usage has probably upgraded at some point. The program that we have now has already been addressed by IT as an at-risk program, the ability to secure it and maintain it. We have attempted to try to upgrade the program, which requires rebuilding of new servers, rebuilding of new programs, and a program that has been bought out and no longer serviced by a company that designed it. So in that adventure, we started to look at other opportunities. If we're going to have to spend a certain amount of money just to get up to par, let's look at what else is out there. So we were able to find a program that's been in existence for 35 years, services more than 50% of their clientele as municipalities, and are a leader in the waste station scale systems. Additionally, more than 50% of our daily revenue comes from what we call our charge account customers, which is our local businesses and people that run through and dump regularly. And this will create a customer-friendly experience for them. And it's going to include integrated software and credit card transactions. It's going to put us up at the highest level as far as auditing and really streamline the process overall to better serve our customers.
Yeah. So just want to, like I said, that'll be on the consent agenda. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you guys want to go over that. And then I'm just going to kind of reiterate to Janet's point. You know, all of this proposed change, as well as the upcoming projects that we have, are to support council's goal of highly-rated city services and a service-oriented culture. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Brady, I know we're not really talking fee structure today, we're just talking service and hours, but do we charge a different rate for non-city residents than we do for city residents for use of our transfer station?
Councilman Moore, no, we do not. Everybody gets charged the same rate, whether they jump off, trash, brush, or inert.
Is that something that we would consider? Because we're the only transfer station that's used by a lot of people in other municipalities and county that take advantage of the facility that we provide, or, I'm just curious?
Yeah. And Janet might be able to touch on this as well. So we did have an intergovernmental agreement when our closed landfill closed back in the 90s and this transfer station came up, that it was going to be utilized as a regional transfer station with some cost sharing, which we hope to address maybe in the coming fiscal years with the county, that the rate would not change city versus county residents.
Brady never needs my help, that's for sure. But I would like to add that although there isn't a different rate, and Brady's exactly right, that intergovernmental agreement will benefit us as we're doing some work going forward on the transfer station. But the way that it does show up for our residential customers is in the residential services. That's where the services are exclusive to the residents of the city of Prescott. So we have all of those additional household hazardous waste. Gosh, help me out here.
Bulk item.
There you go.
Christmas trees, green waste drop-off.
Yeah, we're just finishing up the bulk item services right now. So those are all the services that are exclusive to city of Prescott residents, but the transfer station is run under an IGA.
Thank you for that clarification. Also, I know there are a lot of private haulers in our community and in our county. Do they use our transfer station, or do they take their loads directly to Gray Wolf?
Councilman Moore, they do both. There's obviously a little, to drop it off at the landfill, you're going to save what we charge for the hauling and stuff like that. So it would save them money to haul to the landfill, but ultimately, they don't have the time or they're too busy to get out there. But I would say, as far as we're located, a majority of the local contractors and some of the private haulers, they do haul to us.
And one last question, I'm sorry. You mentioned that we're, the current contractor for hauling is going to be discontinued. Do you have any concerns that you're not going to be able to find a local contractor? Or do you feel confident that there's not going to be any problem finding another contractor to fill that gap?
Yeah, Councilman Moore, the last time we put this out to bid in 2016, we had two bidders. One was local, or both of them were local. And I don't think the current contractor is not going to bid on it again. I think they are going to bid on it again, it's just how the last contract was set up as far as cost increases throughout each year. They're to the point where they need to reevaluate how they're doing business.
Thank you.
That's right. Councilman, they did tell us specifically, our current contractor has told us specifically, that the 3% limitation, the CPI, is their reasoning. It's not meeting the needs and the costs that we're all dealing with right now. So that's why we're going to have to go back out.
All right. I don't think we have any public comment, do we?
We do not.
Well, thank you, all of you, again, and I appreciate you joining the panel today.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll probably see you in the audience during the voting meeting, and you guys are doing a great job. Thanks. Yes, adjourned.